All right, I'm still booting up my computer, but we've got a couple of minutes past 5:30. Mr. Broussard, with your agreement, I would like to add an item to the agenda to consider additional pre-K French immersion classes.
Consider.
Yeah, we would take the information that Central Office, that the staff would like to present, and then consider making a recommendation to the board for the Wednesday meeting, if you're agreeable to that.
Yes, yes.
All right.
To gain the conversation. Yes.
You need to know.
Oh, well, I'll talk to him. It's just the two of us. Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you just fine.
Yes, yes. Good, I'll second the motion if you need to second the motion. They added to the agenda for conversation purposes, to be discussed at the.
Ms. Dorothy, Ms. Dorothy, that is a motion in a second to add the pre-K immersion item to the agenda, carries unanimously, since there are two of us. So the first item on the agenda is Human Resources Salary Schedule. Is that Mr. Veed?
Caleb Veed, Assistant in Human Resources. What we have is the recommended 2017-2018 salary schedule for this coming year. Everything in the attachment that is new from last year's book has been highlighted. The book reflects the raise that was given to the principals. It reflects the step increase that was not approved for this year, as well as several other things in the book. Do you have any questions?
Can someone, I see that we have an entirely new section, hourly rates for the Transportation Department. Can you review that with us for me, please?
Those rates, and we may come back with a separate attachment for that, those rates are rates that the Transportation Department pays for supplemental runs that people do that are outside of normal runs. And we hadn't had that before, approved by the board, so this past year, whenever I found out about it, we went through and got everything together from them and added it to the book. That way, we could have it on file.
Oh, so this is just putting in writing what has been a customary.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm trying to, hourly rates for Transportation Department, is that the department or the bus drivers, or who, if you?
Sorry, that is rates for bus drivers who are doing extra runs.
Board?
Yes, sir. Board-owned or contracted, just drivers who are doing extra runs, usually during the day, or for specific runs that have to be done that are extra, that are not part of If you look in the back, it actually explains for each one almost exactly what it is and And it is drivers and attendants.
This may not be your cup of tea here. The DTSMA shuttle and ECA runs says midday, AM and PM. What are those?
I can't tell you specifically what it is. Maybe Mr. Craig would have information.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't even believe we have those runs.
That's why we're coming back. We're gonna have an update to this, because Transportation is looking at it, because they just finished going through their routes and updating all the routes. They're gonna pull off of here the extra routes that are no longer going to be needed, that we have a rate for.
Okay.
What happened was ECA had that mid-morning start, so that's what put them in that category last year. We've actually shifted them to the middle school time this year.
All right. Mr. Broussard.
So all of those that, all of those that are highlighted were pay increases, structural leaders.
Not pay increases, I think.
No, sorry, it's just different from the book last year. And it's not necessarily that it's new for this year. There are some things that just came after we did the book last year that we've included in this book that was not in the last book.
All right. We good?
All right. What I'm gonna do is I'm going to, at the very end of the meeting, make a motion to recommend approval for those that don't really have any questions. So item number two, fundraising matching program. Dr. Aguilar, would you and Mr. Craig like to go through the policy developed in, from the direction of the board with the inclusion of that $500,000 in the Capital Improvements Fund?
So as it was approved in the budget this past June, a set of amount of funds were set aside by the board, approved in the budget, and what we're trying to bring to the schools is the opportunity for an organization at the school level to seek matching funds from district funds to match capital improvement projects. So let's say an elementary school has a big fundraiser and they're able to collect $4,000 or $5,000 for a paved basketball play area. They would request through the board matching funds for paving that area. We're looking for capital improvement types of projects, so that would eliminate consumable types of materials. One of the questions I had would, would we consider uniforms? Well, I think anything could be considered, but the focus of this was more permanent capital projects, maybe goals for the soccer field, paved areas for the elementary kids. I know one of the elementary schools is looking at a covered play area, so that the kids can still go outside, even if it's kinda rainy outside. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to create an incentive amongst the schools, so that when they fundraise with their parents or their organizations, that when they collect a certain amount of money, they can apply for matching funds with the district. And depending on what type of demand we have for that, we would basically rank them. You'd get one matching project per year. If not a lot of schools participate in that, that would make a little more money available to another school. Initially, we had set a cap of $35,000 in terms of matching potential, and that's probably a high figure, but this is like a first attempt where we can have an incentive for school groups to get a little support from the district, when they find a project that the school community is really invested in and trying to achieve for that school.
Are there any questions, anyone has in the audience?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Ella Arson, I just have a few questions, if you will indulge me. How much money is gonna be in the matching fund program to begin with, at the school board level?
$500,000.
Okay. And will the school board be putting any more money in this program each year?
My thought is that we would, if we were successful with the program and wanted to continue, that we would simply replace each year the money that was spent the prior year. So let's say we get, so let's say we're very fortunate and we get $200,000 worth of applications from our schools this year, then next year, if we wanted to continue, we would just put in $200,000 from next year's revenues, so that it would start at $500,000 each year.
Okay. Why not just split the money up and give it to each school, divided by all the schools that are in the Lafayette Parish school system? Let the principal and parents come up with something and raise that money to match the money that you split between all of them. Take the $500,000 and.
So would they not get the money if, so you say, you say, let them raise the money?
Or just put it aside and then they raise it.
Wait, say that again?
Split the $500,000 between all schools, and then give them a chance to raise that money.
And would they not get the money if they don't raise it?
I'd like to see them get it.
No, I'd like to see them get it, too. No, I think the idea is to encourage investment by parents and community organizations in the schools, and if they're willing to put their money into their local schools, then we'd certainly like to partner with them in making the school grounds look more appealing, be more functional, be more enjoyable for the children, and promote ownership.
I think that's a great, it really is a good idea.
And it doesn't stop anybody from going to any kind of community organization, like the Kulanis or the Lions Club, or the Rotary, and I know all of these groups, they do fundraising throughout the year, and they look for a cause to donate to. So there's nothing stopping anyone who may not have active parents to go to these organizations and solicit funds to be matched by the school board.
I think that's a great idea. And how would the parents being made aware of this matching fund program rely on, or is the school board relying on the principals to educate the parents and get the word out? Are you gonna put something in the paper or on the website?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We're gonna work on getting this approved first, though. We didn't wanna put the cart ahead of the horse.
Okay, all right. Let me see. You said that they have to come to you with an application that lists the cost of the item, but they need to remember that some things are gonna cost money to install, not just to purchase the item, so we need parents and principals to be made very aware of how much it's gonna cost to install this, so that the project doesn't go through because they didn't have enough money, because they forgot to include that.
That's a very, very good point. Thank you.
You're welcome. And one last question, one last question is, why not put the money in a fund to build up to replace the Butler Buildings? Because that problem is not gonna be going away. Is it because you don't have the money to replace the Butler Buildings, or to build a new structure, even if we do remove the Butler Buildings?
So I don't wanna.
I'm just wondering where that's.
Let's look at it this way. So this is money that is already in the Capital Improvements budget. This is money that is going to be spent on our facilities, not necessarily on new construction. This is money that will be spent on facilities and maintenance every year, whether we do this program or not. And so what, kinda we're thinking, what my thought is, is we're taking this small amount of our facilities and maintenance budget, and we're allowing the parents and the people at the school level to help us prioritize it, because a lot of times, the priority list gets determined by our Facilities Management Department and anything else, however else project's making into the Capital Improvements budget. But this allows a small amount of money to be prioritized for what is needed on that campus, from the children, the principal, and the parents' point of view.
And it also gives them skin in the game, when they have to work hard to raise the money to help beautify or improve their school, not.
Look at it this way, no one here, thank you, no one here knows the true impact of a covered drop-off at a school. It may not be that big a deal, it may be a huge deal, but none of us know. But when it is a huge deal, and the parents take the time to raise the money to build one of those, it's a trivial amount of money in the grand scheme of our budget, but it represents a lot of hard work and dedication to raise that money on the parents' perspective, and those are the kinds of efforts that we would like to encourage and incentivize and reward when they happen.
And it will make a positive difference in our schools, and thank y'all for trying to help us.
Thank you, Miss L. Mr. Guidry and Mr. Craig, may we make a footnote, a footnote to the policy here that says something to the effect, I know it says total cost of the item or project, you know, a footnote that says total cost of the project includes all costs installation and everything?
Yes, sir, I'd already made a note.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Debra Thrower, representing Apple. We didn't get a chance to look back at the Human Resources Salary Schedule, and I have one question.
I apologize for not asking for comment, please.
That's okay. We are wondering where the 2002 tax is going, and if there's gonna be, last year, the teachers had an option of voting for a step or getting a check. Did we not make any taxes in addition to the base amount that has to stay into the account to be able to give those teachers a choice of step increase or that extra check?
I'll answer the, so none of the 2002 sales tax money will show up in this book, because each of the past two Octobers, I think, the school board has voted to distribute the reserve money in the 2002 sales tax fund in the form of a one-time stipend to all classroom teachers. And so that does not get added into the salary schedule.
And the reason why I'm asking that is I was on the committee, and the purpose of the tax was to make sure that teachers got an increase every year, so that their salary continued to go up, and if possible, get that extra check in addition to their step increase.
You're preaching to the choir on that one, Ms. Thrower. I'm the one who votes against it every year and gets yelled at.
Okay.
But to answer your other question, I believe, and this is me going from memory, Mr. Guidry, that the reserve, there is no reserve in the 2002 sales tax fund after the last two years? Or it seemed very unlikely that we would be distributing a bonus check this year?
We're still working on finalizing the numbers, but I would say that at this point in time, I think the board will have the option to consider a 14th check for fiscal year ending June 3017. We'll have that number in the, probably closer to the end of August, is when we normally have everything finalized and bring it to the board. So I am anticipating that the board will be able to entertain making a distribution for this past fiscal year.
Thank you.
So the option for a small step increases is not there?
Based on the past, my past experience, we will have the option of, so when Mr. Guidry says we'll have the option of making a distribution, we're talking about two different ways to distribute the money, one in a step increase and one in a stipend.
One makes a permanent difference in your retiring salary, and one's enough for Christmas presents.
Again.
I'm trying to educate my, educate my coworkers as well, to make sure they understand, but it would be nice if we had the option.
I can promise you this, if we do have the, if this item does come before the school board, whether we would make a step increase or a one-time distribution, we will have the conversation again. I will be the only vote against it, and I will get a ton of emails telling me how dumb I am, so.
Well, I thank you for your encouragement on that.
It's okay, I look forward to the time every year. And I apologize for not soliciting comments about the salary schedule. Does anyone else have a comment to make? All right.
Do you have anything?
Yes. On the matching funds?
Yes.
I would like the parents to understand and like them to know that it's, does not necessarily have to be like the items that are listed, the covered walkway, play area, lighting, fence, and so on, something that maybe the school board is responsible for, for instance, like fencing, we are responsible for their safety. But maybe come up with something a little bit more personal through the student body, something that would, that would, they would leave, you know, senior class or something, would leave something for the students coming in, to encourage them to look beyond the normal list that we have here, and encourage them to be creative, because playground equipment is something that, that, you know, I guess that the school board take care of, and their health covered walkways and lighting is something that we do. But to go beyond the norm or the list that we have, and to be creative with some of the things they do, to beautify the school, to beautify the school campus, because they've got much more creativity than I have, and I would like for them to take that on.
President Morris has asked if the Finance Committee moves this forward, that it next should be vetted by the Executive Committee. So maybe the motion should be that the Finance Committee recommend to the Executive Committee this policy.
It's fine. I'll make such a motion that the Finance Committee recommend the Executive Committee review and approve.
Second.
And second, and we'll carry unanimously, Ms. Dorothy. I'm gonna move, I'm gonna take it out of order with the science consumables and then the pre-K immersion, so that we can handle, have our discussions last. So we'll go the 2.4, academics, elementary, science consumable. Might I ask while you walk up here, how did you choose that color?
I actually did not. And I actually tried to print it in for the watch, like mine. Mine is like that.
I thought for sure this was gonna be Royce Bibb or something like that.
This color is not in a mask, so I don't even know what color this is.
On the computer, it's one color.
Thank you. On the computer, it's one color for the teachers, and then our pronounce will be something different, so. All right, so we are here. Dr. Aguilar, did you wanna start, or did you?
Mr. Centoni, do you mind if I just lead into this?
However you guys wanted to handle this.
So Dr. LeBlanc and I are science specialists, and we are passionate about science education and science literacy. We just received our LEAP results for this past school year, and I regret to say publicly that our science LEAP scores trail our ELA and our mathematics scores by a very, very large margin. We need the new science curriculum that Dr. LeBlanc is rolling out to our teachers. We need teachers to begin working with students in a discovery type of environment, using manipulatives, using a significant amount of consumable materials. When Dr. LeBlanc and I discussed what would an elementary teacher likely need in terms of consumables, she came back with a figure of about $500 per classroom. That was a large budget number, so I made the decision to ask the board for support for $250 per elementary teacher for purchasing of consumable materials. Consumables could be anything from drinking straws, to glue, to paper, the list goes on and on, materials and supplies that kids will need in order to engage in science discovery. And so we're asking for support from the board to help our teachers make these purchases of these consumables. Without support from the board, many of our teachers are just going to be unwilling to financially front the dollars needed to provide for the opportunities for our students. In a nutshell, that's what we're asking here today, is for you to help our science teachers, elementary science teachers, have the tools they need to be more effective.
Did I pretty much say it all?
That is pretty much.
You have a look like you have nothing to add.
No, well, no, I don't. I mean, he said it all. And the important thing to know about what is different in the classroom this year and in the next few years and beyond, is that we have adopted the new standards from the state. And as the teachers begin to implement that into their classrooms, we are no longer just teaching science. We are now teaching students how to do science. So there's a drastic difference in what teachers are expected to do with their students. So we really are working, in those lessons, you'll see that our 5E model of instruction really takes children through the engagement piece of science, asks them to explore different topics that align to the standards, and in the end, essentially, they are expected to not just recall information, but to apply it to a new scenario, to really understand what's going on, so that they can apply it across disciplines, apply it in different areas of their life, and really understand it on a global scale. So without being able to actually do the science and be the scientist, it's gonna be really difficult for them to become masters with that content, because the engineering practices are part of the standard itself. And without giving you a big workshop on that, which I would love to do for you very soon, that's really, we ask for your support today.
So what do we, what do we not buy at $185,000 that we would've bought at $371,000?
Well, the, it's a start, is really all I can tell you.
Is $371 a start, or is $371 what you need?
So the actual amount that we need is really difficult to give you because of two things. One, we are only at Unit 2 of our lessons, and that's not all grade levels. It takes a lot of time to build great lessons. And two, we're hoping at the end of this year, maybe in the spring, we will actually adopt a curriculum that's been vetted by the state.
Okay.
And at that point, I can give you a much better estimate of what consumables will actually cost teachers. So this year is our implementation year, next year is our full operational year, and if we have a curriculum, then that has been vetted by the state and so on, then I can give you a better estimate. But $250 is a start. Most teachers spend way more than that in their classrooms, and that is before they have to purchase the consumables for the science.
I think back to 2014, and when we were implementing Eureka and whatever the ELA curriculum is, and how the implementation was not as smoothly going as it could've been. So I'm certainly in favor of doing this, to make it as easy as possible on the teachers to switch up and make sure that they're getting the science education to the children. Mr. Broussard, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm not a real strong proponent of change, but I understand that changes have to be made with the science program, because we dropped off somewhat, and we've gotta make some changes to do better. And I think this on-hands approach may be a little bit more entertaining, more interesting to the student, rather than watching a film or reading a book or something. Hoping that is the change we need to bring our schools up, to keep our kids more interested in the program that they need. But one of my, my pet peeves is that every time someone is selling something, we buy it. And sometime, we don't stay long enough with the program to actually learn what it does to teach. It's. does to teach, and, and that's, and that's my problem. It's, it's, I don't know how long we've been with the ones in the past, it's obviously not working, so I don't know the one before that was working, and hoping this one does work, it's, it's, it's a difficult, you know, it's, it's a difficult task to, to, different decision to come by. But I, I yet, no, I'll have to support this because what we've got is not working.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santani, with your permission, I would like you to identify maybe a funding source for this $185,000. I would propose that we add this to the savings from the transportation budget.
You have anticipated my question beautifully, Mr. Superintendent. I was going to suggest that this be a cost center transfer to Ms. LeBlanc. I don't know what your cost center is. What is your cost center?
1416.
Okay, so we go from 1203 to 1416, Mr. Guidry? Is that what we're, we're doing? All right, now I'll include that in the motion.
Thank you.
Does the audience have any questions? Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc.
Thank you.
And then finally, our new agenda item, the expansion of pre-K, consider additional pre-K French immersion classes. Ms. Samick?
Yes, sir. As you know, in, in the spring, we talked about adding three additional pre-K classrooms to the 17, 18 school year. We did that, we ran the lottery, and no surprise, every seat is filled for a pre-K at Evangeline, a pre-K at Myrtle Place, and additional pre-K at Prairie. In the process of the lottery, we realized we still have 91 pre-K French immersion students wanting to get into the French immersion program. We have at, at Evangeline, we have 22 students on the waitlist, Myrtle Place, we have 44 students on the waitlist, and at Prairie, we have 25 students on the waitlist. So looking at the waitlist, they could all accommodate an additional pre-K classroom. Looking at the capacity of the schools and realizing that each year we have to add possibly one additional grade level, we realize that Myrtle Place most likely could not house any additional pre-K classes. So I'm gonna pause there just to let you know that, you know, there are other things we have in our consideration, I'll wait for your questions. But the reason why we brought this as an agenda, agenda item tonight is, the community is absolutely saying there is a need for more pre-K French immersion.
Thank you. Mr. Broussard, do you have any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? I had much the same concerns about Myrtle Place. I was keeping up the science consumables Excel, Excel sheet because it has the number of classrooms, and I look at 3, 3, and 3 for the number of sections of kindergarten first and second, and then 5, 6, and 5. And so we add two more in there, and then you go and take into account the fact that two pre-K classes would be going into three kindergarten classes next year, which means you're effectively reducing the number of open seats for the kindergarten lottery at Myrtle Place to 23 students.
Correct.
So my just suggestion to put in the back of your head, because I agree with you that Myrtle doesn't have the room, but if, if you're saying Prairie and Evangeline can handle it, I think this is wonderful. My suggestion for Myrtle Place is next year to consider doing, if you, if, I mean, I think we're gonna have the demand again, to do two pre-K and 4K, because you're going to be losing five 5th grade sections.
Yes, sir.
And only replacing it with three kindergartens. Anyway, you guys get all that, I know you do. Do we have any concerns about staffing for two of these classes, given that first day of school is three weeks from, three weeks from today? I don't know when it is.
You, you are correct. I did speak with Tia LeBrun, the World Language Immersion Specialist. We do have two French-speaking and native to their countries, I'm not sure which country, but not native to the United States. They are here, they're going to be working as paraeducators, and we can put them into the position as a long-term sub into either they complete their certification, or until there is someone that is certified in that area. But both, Ms. Tia has already spoken to both, and both are very excited to become pre-K teachers, they just don't have all the necessary credentials at this time.
Okay. I think a secondary, and this is, I know you guys know this, I'm saying this for, for the public's knowledge, a secondary consideration in all this is that this would eventually indicate a need to expand kindergarten classrooms and first grade classrooms in French immersion. And we get a $20,000 subsidy per classroom from the state of Louisiana for every French immersion classroom we have. So we are greatly incentivized to have just frankly as many French immersion classrooms as we can possibly have demand to meet, so. It is, it is a cost-effective classroom, or it's certainly a less expensive classroom for us to operate, so. If no one has any, any other comments on this item, then I will make a slew of motions before we get to our discussions. So, Mr. Broussard, I'll move that we recommend approval of the 2017-18 salary schedule. He seconds that, Ms. Dorothy? Well, we gotta, we gotta, we got a couple of minor, minor things. So that, that passes unanimously, Ms. Dorothy? We already did fundraising. I'll move that we transfer $185,500 from cost center 1203 to cost center 1416.
Mr. Santani?
Yes, sir.
I had misunderstood, it should be 1309, Transportation.
Oh.
Yes, sorry about that.
Why do I have 1203?
Sorry, Mr. Craig.
Sorry, Joe. All right, so we'll do that again. I move that, or move that the Finance Committee recommend the Board transfer $185,500 from cost center 1309 to cost center 1416 for elementary science consumables. And Mr. Broussard seconds, Ms. Dorothy? And then finally, I'll make sure I get this right. Finance Committee?
Do we go to the Board or we?
We gotta go to the, no, we gotta go to the Board.
It pops up sometime and it goes away.
Yeah, she's recording, she's recording our votes. We're not actually voting today.
Yeah, but it pops up sometime and it goes away. I don't know. All right.
Finance Committee recommends that the Board add a pre-K, pre-K French immersion class, one each at Prairie Elementary School and Evangeline Elementary School. Funding to come from cost center 1309. This is, we're taking money out of the transportation budget, for those that don't, don't know what we're doing. Our budget document that we adopted specified a savings of $1.6 million for 20 routes out of the transportation budget. Our transportation department has far exceeded their initial projection of route saved, so for every route they save over 20, that's an additional $50,000 in our budget, and we're recommending that the full Board take that money from transportation that we're saving and spend it in the classroom, so. I think that's it for our, for our motion. So now we're gonna go to the review of policy file, DCF fund balances. And this is just going to be a discussion, I don't, unless we come up with some kind of action that the Board can take, but I put this on the agenda as a discussion of how to move forward with our general fund reserves, and how we allocate and recognize any additional revenue that may occur from year to year. So, Mr. Guidry, would you walk us through the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six classifications of fund balance within the general fund, just as a start?
Okay, the, the first category is non-spendable fund balance, which is basically items such as inventory and prepaid items. Second is that of restricted fund balance, which includes amounts that can be spent only for specific purposes stipulated by external parties or through legislation, such as grants or donations. Then we have committed fund balance, which includes amounts that can be used for specific purposes determined by a formal action of the Board or through school board policy. So the difference between the restricted and committed is basically how the funds are getting restricted. One is by external, is externally, and one is by the Board. We also have a fourth classification, which is assigned fund balance. I think that in this category includes amounts to be used by the school board for specific purposes, but do not meet the criteria as being restricted or committed. And normally, these are, assignments are made by the Superintendent or the Finance Department. And then we have unassigned fund balance, which is the residual amount once we consider the first four that we reviewed. I would like to mention that the committed fund balance category includes our stabilization fund. Some folks refer to it as our rainy day funds, which is basically money that's been set aside, in this case equal to three months of operating expenses, to put the, the Board or the school district in a position of, in the event of an economic downturn, having time to, to, to plan the manner in which to address the economic downturn without having to make any drastic cuts overnight. So that's sort of the idea behind setting those funds aside.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry. And, and to clarify this, we're not only going to discuss the, the classroom wings, but that is kind of the main reason I, I put this on here, but any, any and all comments and ideas on how to better suit this policy to our needs is, is welcome today. So what I had initially questioned Mr. Guidry about was how do we go about allocating through policy increases in our revenues to class, construction of classroom wings? And to, to put that in simple terms is we expect to, let's just say we expect to collect $100 next year in our, in our budget, and we end up collecting 105. Then how do we take some percentage of that $5 that we didn't expect to collect and put that in the savings account, and so that it can be used towards construction costs? And then furthermore, how do we, how do we then do it in such a manner that allows us the maximum flexibility to either sell revenue, sales tax revenue bonds, or property tax bonds, or do a pay-as-you-go format where we simply save money until we have enough to do whatever projects we, we deem necessary? So, Mr. Guidry suggested that we put a line item in the capital improvements fund budget, called classroom wing reserve or something of that nature. And, Mr. Guidry, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be committed fund balance? Is that, is that correct? Or would that be a, a general fund transfer to the capital improvements fund?
Depending on how the funds make it into the capital improvement funds, be, if, for example, let's say excess sales tax collections. Right, right now, pursuant to Board action, it's not included in the policy, but back in, I believe it was 2006, the Board approved, took action whereby any excess sales tax collections, excess being defined as actual collections in, over and above budget, 75% of that excess from the 65 tax would go into the capital fund. So using that as an example, that 75% would be recorded or placed in classroom, reserved for classroom wings, and would remain there until that point in time that the Board would take action on expending those funds, in, in any manner, manner that you mentioned. It may be pay-as-you-go, it may be considered as part of debt service, you know, for sale of bonds, just depending on how quickly we can, and how much we can, would be accumulated in that account.
Are there other ways that it would, that it would make it into the capital improvements fund? And, or should we, yeah, I mentioned to the Superintendent earlier that there was a lot of turnover here in the last couple of years, and thank goodness you were, you were still around to remember 2006, because I had no idea of that Board action. I knew that we were putting, putting that money in there, but I had no, no idea why. So should we put that in this policy? Or should we rethink the 75% that goes directly into capital improvements and direct that it be used for classroom wings, or some percentage of it be used for classroom wings? I mean, what's the, what's the best way to, to specify this going forward?
With regards to the percentage, you know, including that in the, in the policy, would definitely memorialize it in a, in a better manner than, than having to go through minutes to, to find it. With regards to it being used for classroom wing, wing expansions, or things of that nature, I guess there, and, and of course, that's a great cause, but one or two things I think the Board would need to consider is, is, you know, when you put it into policy, of course, it, it, it's a restriction. So if for some reason the Board needed to utilize some of those funds, maybe just a small portion or a percentage of it, for something that, that comes up of a capital nature, it would, it would require Board action at that point to do so. So it would just be a matter of whether or not you'd want to be that specific, or just leave it in the, where it's at now, such that it would be placed in the capital improvement funds, we would have the understanding that it would be included in one or two places. Right now, we have a reserve for 18, 19 projects. Anytime any, any funds become available, say, let's say a project doesn't cost as much as we anticipated, we move those, those excess funds to 18, 19 projects. Now we'll have two line items. We'll have a reserve for 18, 19 projects, and we'll have a reserve for classroom wings. So we can indicate capital improvements, and the Board could, through actions on, on an ongoing basis, indicate to staff which, which of those two line items they would wish for those funds to be placed, just to give the Board some flexibility to address, you know, situations that may come up. An example being, heaven forbid, you know, the flood that we experienced in August, something along those lines. So I guess my recommendation would be that we, that the Board at a minimum include that it be placed in capital, and then that can be further discussions as to how specific you would want to go beyond, beyond that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments from what we've discussed thus far? All right, so I was, oh, go ahead, Mr. Broussard.
That's certainly is a great thought, and, and as I'm thinking about the amount of money we need to complete our, our wing project, I'm, one of... wondering how long would it take us to accumulate, what, $400,000, $400,000, or whatever we need to complete our project, other than some of the proposals we had earlier this year? But it's a great start. Think we ought to list what we need before we come up to how we're going to enter this line item, or just hoping pre that we got a overage and put into that budget.
Well, let's look at it this way. This is kind of my idea, is that when we have an excess collection of revenue, especially if it's due to property increases in property tax collections, those are recurring instances of revenue. So let's say we have $4 million of property tax increases over our budgeted amount this year, and we want to put 75% of that towards classroom wings. Well, what we could do is we could take that $3 million that is recurring, that will be, that $3 million will be there next year, that entire $4 million will be there next year. We could take that $3 million, and we could say this $3 million goes into this reserve line item every year. And then we can continue taking increases and taking a percentage. It doesn't have to be 75%, right? And so we can put $3 million this year, and next year we can put $3.25 million next year, and then $3.75 million, and then three years from now we have $10 million. But we still got that, we still got those property tax increases and the percentage of the increases funding this. And what you end up with at the end of it is a stable revenue stream for constructing classroom buildings. Now, this takes 30 years, it takes 30 years instead of 10, but I mean, you know, just because it's...
That's my...
Well, I mean, just because we're not going to get it done in five years doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, right?
I agree.
Yeah, so, at any rate. So the thing I was about to say before Mr. Bruce's question, Mr. Guidry, was I was reading the, I forget what it was, the government officers' recommendations that government entities have at least a two-month stabilization fund, reserve fund, for their general fund. As I said, maybe more, maybe less, depending on the kind of government entity you are. Do you have any thoughts on the, whether we fall into the should be more, should be less, or what the, I guess, parameters and factors to take into account? And I would imagine if we're, I would imagine if we're unlike a lot of businesses, we don't have, you know, like if we're closed, we don't have a lot of expenses, right? Like that kind of thing, but, and I know a lot of people think of this stabilization fund as a, as kind of an insurance policy, like if a hurricane hits. But, and it certainly is that to an extent, but it's also to guard against, I think, the more realistic scenario of a disaster hits, but your entire tax base has been wiped out. Or you experience like Cameron Parish did after Rita, where your tax collections have really decreased, and it's that kind of stabilization fund. But to my question, what are the factors that we should consider when thinking, are we a, should we be at three months, should we be comfortable at two months, should we be at two and a half months, kind of thing?
Yeah, I think it becomes just a matter of comfort level. Our external auditor, audit firm has recommended the three months. You know, when you think about that percentage of our budget that consists of salaries and benefits, and the size of our system, there's really not a whole lot left of the budget in the event that you have to address some sort of economic downturn, for whatever reason. So that three-month period, it's not to say it couldn't be two and a half, but, so again, it becomes a matter of comfort level with the recommendation from our external audit firm being three months. That's basically the goal that we set as a result of that recommendation, but, I mean, it's a board decision at the end of the day.
The GFOA policy is based on our school systems, the majority of school systems in the country are property tax-based. Yeah, I know you've seen most things. We're sales tax-based, and one of the things you have to look at is the volatility of sales taxes opposed to property tax, and also that we are 30 miles off the coast and barely above sea level. So that would be two of the biggest things, I think, that push the orders to say three months rather than two, because of our property tax base being so unstable comparative to what the GFOA is looking at, which is a national organization with the vast majority of school systems being property tax-based. So that's two big variables.
Okay. Thank you. You guys can just go up to the mic, we're not going to be too formal here.
I'd like to encourage all, I know the taxes did not pass last year. If you think about the 2002 tax, it took a while before the public decided to vote for that. It's not that they weren't in favor of it, they just wanted to make sure they knew where their money was going. Nobody ever wants to pay more taxes, but there was a lot of the public that were really looking at the schools and saying, "Well, we really need to do something." But they just weren't convinced that it was all going to go to where they wanted to go. It might be worth reconsidering rewording it, and maybe taking out something like operational expenses or something that seems vague, and trying it again, because, like you said, it's going to be a long time before you get enough money the other way to fix the buildings. So just a thought on that.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Having this new line item would show the public that you still are very serious about fixing the problems that we have in our schools, and building new classrooms, and replacing old rundown buildings. Is there a way that you can add a statement in the wording of the policy that would allow the board to use money from this new line item if necessary, by listing the items or the things that would be acceptable, so that you would be able to dip into this new line item if y'all do create it? Did that make sense?
I don't know if we want to necessarily encourage dipping into the line item when we're trying to...
But y'all were talking about not hold, not tying your hands, being able to use money if it was a dire need to do that. Is there a way to put something in the new line item wording of the policy so that if the need should arise, you'd be able to have that leeway to be able to do it without messing up the new line item?
I'll make this point to you, that if we don't put anything in the policy tying our hands, we don't need to put anything in the policy untying our hands. And anytime the money that gets directed to this reserve line item through board policy can be moved through the school board voting on it.
Then make a decision, bite the bullet, put the money in there, you know it's needed.
Right.
It's just how much, start out with a low percent, next year add a bit if it's working.
And I'll make the overall point that it's not just we need, we want to build one wing, right? It's that we need to build all kinds of wings.
Hello.
And so the overall point is, how do we get to a point where we have carved out some recurring revenue that funds this construction, is what we're saying. So, thank you. I think you're right. I think you're right about the...
And I think y'all are on the right track. We need to do something.
Yes, and to fill in the point about the reserve fund, there is six, is it 65 million, Mr. Guidry, or 63? I can't remember what it is now. 285 divided by...
65.5.
65.5? So there's 65 and a half million dollars that we have sitting in the bank for a three-month reserve, which would be 21.75 or something like that.
The start.
If we went to a two-month. Ms. Mounds.
First, I want to thank you for making an effort, as they did in 2006, to create a line item that will make certain that there is not only continued funds for construction, but possibly at some point in time, hopefully, continued funds for maintenance, which is one of the most significant problems we've had. But I also want to speak in favor of taking money from the three-month reserve, from the stabilization fund. I've been around the system since about '69. I don't think we've ever used a two-month reserve with all the hurricanes we've had and the multiple downturns in the oil industry that we've experienced with our sales tax revenue. I don't remember, Billy, you might know, I don't think we ever used a two-month reserve. So if we could take, make it 2%, 2.5%, 2% would give you 21, 22 million dollars, plus the recurring, whatever percentage, extra or unbudgeted sales tax or property tax, however you choose to do it, you're on your way to starting a fund significant enough to make a difference in some of the buildings in this community. I think with the economy as it is realistically, a tax isn't going to pass anytime soon, certainly not as soon as you'd like to have buildings repaired. So I would appreciate looking at, taking whatever percentage from that three-month reserve you could take to give you a jump start. If you start solely with a percentage of the excess property tax revenue, and this year might be significant, it might be $4 or $5 million this year, it will take you four years to get to where you could get to if you simply took one month out of that three-month reserve. And I may have misunderstood, any of your auditor, the same auditor for LCG? I thought he had told them, of course, it's a completely different government, that a two-month reserve was mandatory. And of course, they have the same concerns when it comes to hurricane, as we do, in terms of our liability. But right now, we have over $65 million sitting there doing nothing. Some of that money, and I don't think it's unreasonable to say a third of the money, could be used in that fund to accumulate dollars to be able to build some of the projects that you want to build. Because it's not dedicated, because it's simply a school board policy, whether an emergency, whether a problem, you simply take a vote of the board. It's not like having a dedicated tax that you have to go back to the voters, an undedicated tax, which is what the parish is looking at having to do. So I would encourage you to put as much money as you could into an account that's labeled for construction of those wings that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mounds. Guys, does anyone else have any comments? So I intended this just for discussion tonight. I intend to bring this back at the next month's finance committee meeting. Like, Mr. Guidry, Mr. Dugan, just start thinking about what this looks like, and I'm certainly going to give you my thoughts on the matter, so you can take those into account. But what this all looks like as far as how we structure it in policy, and how we get it to the board to vote on, to get us headed down this road, so. Mr. Bruce?
And perhaps, I understand what Ms. Mounds was saying, and I'm thinking about the money we need, and how little money we're getting at a time, and how long it'll take us to accumulate the $400,000 that we need to complete the project. That's my only concern. The 28, the $28 million that we can pull from the reserve fund, I mean, from the rainy day fund, would help us, the $3 or $4 million, but we're looking at the first year, 30, 40 million dollars. What are we going to tackle? And then the next year, we don't have the 30, 40 million dollars, so we at a standstill. So we got a wing, we're building one wing, and we need, I don't know how many more, but we're 175 million dollars short. So that's my only concern, is maybe when we get to a closer conversation with it, we can find what's the best avenue to get to the $400 million, and the most reasonable time, and the most reasonable way to get to there. I understand what you're saying, to get, pulling, keeping a three, a two-month rainy day fund, you know, I can see that. But we need 400 million, 30 million is just...
How do you eat an elephant, Mr. Bruce?
You ball it first.
One bite at a time. That's it. I mean, you know...
I understand.
We'll never get there if all we see is 400 million.
That's right. But I want to, I'd like to look at the whole picture and then start carving portions out.
Okay. Great. Well, I'd encourage everyone to brainstorm this month, and come back next month with ideas that we can discuss on how to achieve this. So the final budget document, agenda item, is a discussion on our budget document, and this should be construed to include our annual report as well. One of the lessons learned for me in our campaign for the failed tax was that we do not present information in our annual report or our budget document that is very easily understood. It, in fact, took me a couple of years to get completely comfortable with our budget document, Mr. Guidry. I would certainly, just from the 30,000-foot view, if someone asked me what the school system budget is, I would like there to be one, a one-page document that I could hand to them that has, and just off the top of my head, how much money we collect, how much money we spent, how many classrooms we have, how many students we have, how many teachers we have, how many employees total, right? These are the, these are the high points of what we do. I mean, those are the, those are essentially the questions that I got asked repeatedly during the, before the election, and frankly, the answers that I would get, not the answers I would give, because I know the answers to those questions, the answers I would get from people in the public were different every time, when this should really be something that, there it is, there's the answer, right? So how do we, how do we accurately report our information every year in the manner that we're required, while also making our budget and financial information more transparent for people who don't have two months to decipher everything? That's a, that's a big opening to question, and I'm open to anyone who has any suggestions whatsoever.
We have two months.
I mean, for instance, for instance, our budget is not $510 million, right?
You have that unified budget, which, from an accounting standpoint, includes some duplication, meaning you may have the funds reflected in, say, the general fund, and then they'll end up getting transferred to the capital fund, so it's also reflected in the capital funds. So with that said, we can include a schedule that includes the information that you just mentioned, number of employees, number of students, so on and so forth, and take that unified budget and back out those items that are, in essence, duplicated or reported in a certain way for accounting reasons, that we can make adjustments for, to ultimately reflect what's being expended on an expenditure basis. We could do that. The unified budget, basically, one pager, we can modify it and include the information that you mentioned in one page as well.
Okay. Ms. Mounds?
A suggestion is to look at the LCG budget, the LC of Lafayette budget. Both of those budgets were much more user-friendly than the school board's budget is, and they had federal funds that were dealing, they had the same set of problems, just a tad bit different. The other thing I think can be approved upon is the process for the budget hearings. If you had last year's, budgeted last year's actual, then you would have a better idea if you were looking at this year's budget. I really think looking at the LC Lafayette budget or the current LCG budget, which is a much easier to understand format for somebody who doesn't understand government finance, both of those might be helpful to look at, and I'm sure they have them.
Yeah, I was mainly talking about, and I know it's included somewhere in our annual report, Mr. Guidry, essentially a balance sheet, right, with a few extra... report, Mr. Gidry, essentially a balance sheet, right, with a few extra pieces of information to it. So I mean, we know, we know we collected $342 million of taxes in fiscal year 15, but because of the way the unified budget is presented, it was represented that we spent $430 million. So these are the kinds of communications issues that are entirely self-inflicted, that I'm trying to alleviate. Do you guys have any suggestions? I know y'all spent a lot of time with our budget over the last year. Took you probably about as long as me, hopefully not as long as me to figure it out. This is your job, for Christ's sake, right? Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Broussard? Would you mind going, since we're, welcome to school board meetings, we require you to go to the microphone.
While he's making his trip there, and I totally agree that Mr. Gidry, you and Mr. Gidry have accounting knowledge, and for a layperson like myself, if it took you two years to understand, it has not taken me enough time yet to understand exactly what's all in the budget. And it is confusing, and it is hard to explain, but I understand the process of it, you got to go through the whole thing, but I would hope there would be more layperson-friendly.
Yeah, and this accounting is my profession, and we did take some time over the last six months to begin to absorb and understand how the CAFER report is put together and get some sense of appreciation of why it's done that way. And I'm not here to tell you that I understand it today by any means. It is a very complex instrument that I do believe, and I'm willing to step in and help volunteer to begin to understand it better so we can begin to make some recommendations. It is very confusing, and I can only imagine what a layperson may think whenever we attempt to explain it, but, you know, whenever you hear words of duplications or things of that nature, when you're talking about budgeting, it sends up all kinds of flags that lead to misinterpretation. And I think we do need to take the time to, from our perspective, you know, in supporting the school board, to understand it better before we begin making any recommendations. So that's why I'm here this evening, is to hopefully participate in helping the school board in that process, because it is very complex, and you have to ask yourself the question, do you have to continue along that path? Can you go to a more simplified presentation of a budget like Ms. Mounts was, I believe, trying to convey a few moments ago, that would help the process be better understood and not too many people in the public criticizing the way that it's being done right now?
What was your experience in explaining to other citizens? So someone would come and tell you, we spend $17,000 per student, right? Because our unified budget number, I think, was $490 million, and our number of students was $30,400, and it comes out to $17,000 per student. So when someone would say that, what would you tell them? Did you ever find an answer that was concise or that made the light bulb go off?
No, we never did find the answer. I'm still...
So I didn't find the answer either?
Yeah, I'm still trying to understand, and I can only imagine what Billy has to go through with his department in complying with the standards that the CAFER reporting requires to meet that accreditation. I'd love to be able to, I'll listen to anyone that's an expert at it that can help us, you know, digest it better, but, you know, quite honestly, you know, when I had to explain it to others, you know, I had to use phrases like, you know, we need to...
Double counting.
Double dip or move this part of a particular expense into this area as well. So it makes it look like you have a budget that's, you know, some, what, 200-plus?
Right around $150 million larger than...
Larger than it actually is.
Yeah.
And when you can't explain that to the...
That's 50% larger, by the way.
And you can't explain that to the public clearly and concisely, you know, we're setting ourselves up for failure by allowing that to happen. So I'm happy to play a part in helping the school board better understand that and maybe coming up with some recommendations that could help us move a little bit clearer in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Gidry, Mr. Dugah, to what extent is our financial reporting document required, or what role does it play in accreditation? How much leeway do we have? Certainly, we don't want to impact any, and this is not to say we don't want to impact your recognition of your office, but, you know, we get recognized by the accrediting board for reasons, because it's very clear and concise, but it's clear and concise to accountants. So to what extent is our document format controlled by law, organization standards, things like that? And then we'll get your question, Ms. L, I promise.
You have the CAFER that's pretty restricted or pretty well-directed in terms of what information gets included in it and what format. So, you know, that's our external auditors. Now, we're also reporting to the state, so that format is such that it satisfies, we have it set up so that it satisfies our external auditors, and we can also, through use of dimension tables, pull that information in the format that's required to be reported to the Louisiana Department of Education. Beyond that, those same numbers have to be accumulated in such a way so that the 80-plus grantors that we have grant funds coming from can come in and monitor and audit us each one of those grants individually or grouped, just depending on who the grantor is. So you have a lot of different entities that are using those numbers, and so from the CAFER standpoint, not a great deal of flexibility. From a budget standpoint, you know, the detail that's presented, I'd recommend that we continue presenting that detail. Now, how we summarize it and include it in a one-page or two-page document, I see some flexibility there, because at the end of the day, we want to satisfy our reporting requirements, but we're also equally committed to doing what we can to help the public understand what that information means. So I see a little bit more flexibility on the budget side, and so with that said, you know, we're open to suggestions. I would like to continue what's going on or the process that we use. It maps the progress from one meeting to the next. We've had issues where after three or four meetings, it gets a little difficult to recall actions that were taken. It's in a format that accommodates all of the entities that I mentioned, so I think it would be more an issue or more an item or more a project of how to summarize it to make it easier, you know, for the public to understand.
And certainly, we don't want to remove any reporting that we're doing. I think kind of what we're shooting for is to have, when you open, when you open the front page of the CAFER, you know, the other 250 pages can be whatever you guys have to put in there, right? But like, that first page is what I want to see. I want to see, like, I'm looking at LCG's budget right now, hold on. See these graphs right here? These are showing, and up here, he has, the mayor of Robideau has a three-year, and I think this is required by the charter, this is not an innovation on his part, but he has three years of expenditures for the city of Lafayette. So right here is one of the, this is the first chart I saw when I was flipping through here. Total expenditures adopted fiscal year 16, 17, $100 million. 17, 18 projected, 18, 19 projected, 19, 20 projected, along with ending fund balance projections as well. And these are the kinds of things that I can take away from here, because I promise you, when I go and look at the CAFER for LCG, it's going to say $600 million. But city of Lafayette, right here, $100 million. And in that $600 million, you got the parish of Lafayette as well, but, and then you have LUS, which is included, you know, they do the same, they have the same issues we have but don't suffer from the same problems, because I think they have a better presentation of their document itself. And maybe the answer is the budget document, not the CAFER. But I think the answer is, when someone looks at page one of something, they need to be able to say, oh, that's how much they spent, that's how much they, that's how many students they had, that's how many teachers they have, how many classrooms and schools they have, so. At any rate, do you have some more?
The budget document, I think, is a lot more versatile to do things like that with. The CAFER is set in stone, and the accountant profession has complained about it. I've gone to national conferences where it's almost been...
I'm glad I'm not alone.
...riot against GAZB for some of the things they've come up with that are absolutely confusing and irrelevant, and we go up there and we try to tell them, you know, yes, you can read this, but our taxpayers and the people we're trying to communicate with, our board, this is just not making any sense, it's not helpful, and we're spending a lot of money doing this, and that's falling on deaf ears. So what their answer was in the CAFER is that MDNA section, the Management Discussion and Analysis, and that was their attempt to explain the complications in the 250 pages that come after that. So there are some graphs in there, and there are some explanations, but that's after the fact. I think what you're probably talking about, there's two distinct documents, is the budget document and the CAFER.
This is the approved budget. This is not their CAFER.
Right. The budget document have a lot more leeway on how you present that, and I would suggest maybe frequently asked questions. You know, you're out there in the public, what 10 questions did you get? Let's answer those questions. Let's put it in the first page.
That's what I'm telling you, I'm telling you the six.
Right. You're out there, y'all out there, you know, give us what are those top 10 questions, and let's have a frequently asked questions. Maybe that's the first page. What do we spend per student? What's our total budget? What, you know, what were those 10 things that you were constantly being asked that were not answered? And let's put those in there as a front page. Let's put some graphs. But I think that would be, the budget document would probably be where to do that. We can try to work with the MDNA section of the CAFER, that's kind of after the fact, and that's kind of regulated. We can put graphs and do some things in there, and fortunately, it puts on a very tight timeline with that, so.
Well, the budget document, as I say, the budget document itself could use some work as well, because, you know, one of the things that, one of the great things that's missing from the budget document is the number of FTEs in each cost center. And I got the, I requested and got that information in a timely fashion this year, but that is another thing that, you know, we get every month, and I'll go and pull up, is it on the agenda for the personnel for this, for Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
So I'll pull up the personnel changes, right, and at the end of that document, oh, Ms. Thibodeau, I hope it's there, after I'm saying, after I'm saying at the end of this document. Yes, there, all right. We have a table, and this is one of the greatest things for information, but it's never anywhere except this document once a month on the last page. And it's number of employees by funding source, right? And so we can see that we have 3,359 and 1/2 employees in the general fund, 59 in the sales, 2,002 sales tax funds, six in special revenues, four in consolidated adult education, and on and on and on and on and on, right? And so when we have the document that we are going to consider in our budget meeting for general fund, cost centers 1101 to 1200, then we should really have a piece, again, I love pieces, one pieces of paper that I can determine lots of information from, right? Cost center 1101 is, its total budget is this, its total FTEs is this, last year, its total FTEs was this, its total budget was this, right? And then 1102, same thing. These are very high-level pieces of information that you can have, and then right behind it on page two, you can have 1101 line items, right, and the object codes and everything like that. But easy ways for me to roll up, because I should be able to go through those pages in the general fund and then roll it all up to 3,359 and 1/2 and say, oh, okay, I see where all of these employees are, where our costs are and things like that, so. I don't want you to feel like I'm lecturing you, but...
No, absolutely. We need feedback, and I think y'all have got a very good reflection of what the community is concerned about, and you were knocking on doors, and to help us with that feedback and providing that information ahead of time in whatever format is necessary, I think the frequently asked questions would be a good way. People are used to that, and, you know, those top 10 questions are, let's answer them.
Okay.
Put them in the front.
Ms. L?
This one we wanted to add on.
Oh, sure. Okay. Yo, you going to change the topic on us?
Excuse the interruption, but I believe Mr. Dugah was pointing out one thing that I wanted to add on. One of the big misinterpretations that I gleaned from the CAFER reporting and talking to other people in the community is that the total budget number in there was used for the per pupil cost, which was a much larger number than the actual per pupil cost in the general fund budget. And everybody is misunderstanding that, and I think that's one of the biggest communication failures that we have right now going on with it. We got to figure out a way to dispel that and give a true accounting of what is the per pupil cost. So I just, and he mentioned that briefly, and I just wanted to expand on that.
You know, that per pupil cost, it can mean a lot of things to a lot of people, because, you know, to me, if you want to start off, the very largest per pupil cost we have would be three, I don't know what our total tax revenue was for this fiscal year that just ended, but I think last year was 342. Fiscal year 16 was 342, I think. So let's use 342 as an example, right? 342 and 30,000 students. $342 million represents the complete amount of federal tax revenue, state tax revenue, local tax revenue, and any collections from service fees that we take, typically lunches that parents buy, right? So $342 million represents the in-total amount of money collected by the Lafayette Parish School System that we have available to pay teachers, service debt, build buildings, run our food service, you know, cut the grass, paint the buildings, things like that.
Right.
No chance that we could possibly spend more than $342 million, except in the case of when we sell bonds, right?
Right.
Just because I bought a house five years ago doesn't mean that when I reported my income that year, that my income was a few hundred thousand more than it actually was.
Yeah.
So that's the trick, is the 342, $342 million divided by 30,000. If you want to use that as the per pupil cost, I wouldn't begrudge you that, but there are some things in there, like dedicated funds. $37 million in federal funding is dedicated to Title I schools, so you could say the per pupil cost in a Title I school is higher than a per pupil cost in a non-Title I school, because those $37 million are there. The 2002 sales tax fund, which this is going to be a very nuanced point I'm making here, right, is that it's a per pupil cost, teacher salaries. But at the same time, it's not like I can, if I was successful trimming personnel costs, that I could then use that money to build buildings. It would still be going to teacher salaries, no matter how many teachers I have, right? So there's an argument there. These are all very nuanced arguments we're having, and we need to figure out a way that we come out with one number that everybody can just generally accept as...
And surely, there's a standard that across the state is used in that calculation.
The charter schools get $9,200 of money that follows the child, so I would make the case that if we are spending $17,000 per student or $11,400 per student, that the charter schools in Lafayette Parish have some complaints that need to be made to the Department of Education. So typically, the 9,200 is the number.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Always. Okay. What about color coding the line in each section that would indicate the final number for each section, like for teachers, classrooms, utilities, transportation, et cetera? And then on the first page or the last page of the report that the public reads, they would see at a glance the color-coded items that would be reflected in the detailed part of the report? That would help the public to see at a glance how much it costs for the education and support of education and stuff, and pie charts would be greatly... of education and stuff, and pie charts would be greatly appreciated.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. That's a, that's a good one. That's a good one. My eye will go straight to the bottom and see those numbers. That's awesome. Does anyone else have any other suggestions off the top of their head? This is going to be another homework assignment for you guys to think about over the next month of how we can do it. And I'm telling you this, and this is one of the reasons why I like this document so much, Ms. Thibodeau, is that it looks a lot like the LCG budget document, if I can find where it was on my screen again. Because you get to a fund in the LCG budget document, I'm going to scroll way down here. They have revenues by source, but you get into a fund and it tells you exactly... Yeah, look, I mean, like, this is a great one-page document, right? And the city breaks it up a little different. I think they refer to their cost centers more as funds than cost centers. But, you know, Fund 101 is the Lafayette City General Fund, and they just have six columns across. And it's the actual, the current budget, the actual at April 30th, 2016, the projected for fiscal year 16, and the adopted for fiscal year 17. And anything you want to know, grants, federal level, parks and recreation, the Hyman Performing Arts Center, all this stuff is right here, easy to grasp. And then if you want to really look at it, you have the general fund of the city. And you can go and see where you're paying your gas franchise tax, your TV cable franchise tax, your six different property taxes in the City of Lafayette. I don't know, this is a lot easier to understand. It's by no means simple, but it's easier. So anyway, I would appreciate it if everyone would just kind of noodle this a little bit over the next 30 days and see if they can come up with something that we can start to work towards having a more transparent and easier-to-communicate budget document. So do you have anything else, Mr. Broussard? Dr. Aguilar, do you have anything else?
Just to be clear, you really don't have a month to think about this, because the Finance Committee would meet presumably August 7?
Yeah, we don't need to meet on August 7th.
We're going to wait until September.
Yes, we'll wait until September.
Okay.
Turns out, we've got time. All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We'll adjourn the meeting.